Well, good afternoon, everyone. It is Wednesday, January twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-five. It is two P M., and this is the City of Iowa City Work Session Agenda. And we're going to be doing capital improvement projects. And so just wanted to again welcome everyone, and we'll get started. Turn it over to our city manager. Oh, we're going to turn it over here.
I think we can just jump right in. Ron's going to start us off.
Great.
Mister Mayor, Council, good afternoon. I am Ron Canucki, Public Works Director. Today, we're happy to present the proposed two thousand and twenty-five through two thousand and twenty-nine Iowa City Capital Improvement Plan. We will use the Esri Storybook or Story Map Platform for presentation. I would like to thank Engineering Division and in particular Killian Loghead for producing the final presentation. The Capital Projects Fund can be found in the proposed budget document starting on page five hundred. Today, we have five objectives. First, Jaclyn Flegel, our Assistant Finance Director, will go over the plan development process and the fund summary. Second, staff will discuss the ongoing projects. There are fourteen major projects that are not included in the C I P. Third, staff will discuss the seventeen annual projects in the C I P. Fourth, staff will discuss the hundred and four projects that are identified in the five-year program. The projects may not be presented in order that they do appear in the budget document. And the final objective, staff will discuss the projects considered to be on the radar. There are six projects staff believe council should be aware of. As we go through the presentation, you will hear the impacts of the pandemic, the supply chain issues, the availability of equipment and labor, and inflation have had on our projects. We have had to extend schedules and rebid projects to be able to move forward. These impacts are not limited to our projects. They are also been impacts on the private utility companies as they try to relocate before our projects are under construction. We appreciate this opportunity to present the proposed two thousand and twenty-five through two thousand and twenty-nine C I P, and I will turn the presentation over to Jaclyn.
So first, we'll go over the C I P timeline. To to kick the process off, in August, the the forms for requesting C I P projects are sent out to all departments. Those forms are then due back to the Finance Department mid-September where we compile and produce a preliminary report. Then September nineteenth, a C I P committee reviews the projects and amends the preliminary reports. Then, starting in October, those amended, those changes are compiled into an amended report. The committee meets again throughout October. And then, starting in December, those adjustments and final reports are then integrated into the the budget document, which is then submitted to council in January. This side is the funding source summary, kind of to to highlight some of the bigger areas. The largest funding source for our projects is the geo bonds. It's over two types, so it's going to be your essential and the general purpose. Both of those together are for our FY twenty-five bond issue is estimated to be fourteen million two ninety. For the entire C I P plan, which is FY twenty-five to twenty-nine, the average issuance is fifteen million two fifty. Their current debt levy, it can support fourteen million six hundred thousand. And that's with low levy increasing twenty-one point seven cents more. With the assumptions baked in of a two percent increase in taxable growth over the next two years, three percent after that averaging one point six. Or we have averaged one point six six percent growth over the last four. But it has been over two percent the last two years. Another assumption baked in with the debt levy is an effective interest rate of options if we don't need or see our assumption would be to raise the skip this project or delay or move projects. The geo portion, the next portion is going to be a grant. That's forty-seven point eight dollars. The largest chunk of that being the transit facility at eighteen point two million. The airport terminal building of seven point three million, which is not technically funded yet, is my understanding. And the Burlington Street Bridge Replacement of seven point three million, also not funded. The next largest federal grant being four million dollars for the compost facility. Then, the next largest area for funding is the Facility Replacement Reserve at thirty-one point two million in the C I P plan. However, sixteen point two of that is the City Park Pool, which is about the current balance of the Facility Replacement Reserve Fund. The rest is for Fire Station Number Five. No funds are planned to be available, considering the current balance is sixteen point four, and City Park Pool is budgeted to use sixteen point two.
Can you just explain how we, where the original funds came? How how they got to the Facility Replacement Reserve? What funding source did we use?
Those would have come from the general fund surpluses. So over the last handful of years, we've been fortunate enough to come in under budget with conservative budgeting practices. And so any surpluses that we had, we were transferring transferring to both this facility reserve and some to the emergency fund also.
Thank you.
Just to add a little bit to that, Mayor, the we started that process in fiscal year nineteen, if memory serves me correctly. And we built the Facility Reserve annually through fiscal year twenty-three. We did not have enough surplus funds to make transfers in twenty-four. We're not anticipating being able to make any in this fiscal year twenty-five, and we don't have any budgeted in the proposed twenty-six budget. So that that entire accumulation occurred between fiscal nineteen and twenty-three.
Thank you.
This next one is category summary, so it's just breaking out all of the projects for the FY twenty-five through FY twenty-nine plan across the different departments. The the largest category being streets of thirty-three point six percent of the budget. Budget expenses, I should say, at seventy-nine million, seventy-nine point six million. Some of the larger projects to call out from there would be the Dodge Street Reconstruction, which is twenty point one million. The Taft Avenue Reconstruction at twelve point two million, and the Annual Payment Rehab of eleven point nine million. The next largest category would be Transportation Services at twenty-one point six eight million. Most of that is the Transit Maintenance Facility, which is twenty-one point four million. And then on top of that, you would also need to add in the Equipment Building, which is an additional twelve million, because this will be done together. The next largest category would be Water at eighteen point seven seven million. The largest project from there would be the East Elevated Storage at seven point five million. And then finally, Recreation is our next largest category at eighteen point two million, with seventeen point five million of that being the City Park Pool.
All right, if there's no questions, we'll move on to the project portion of the presentation.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Just quickly, I know you all saw this already last night, but we are getting new windows and doors at the senior center, so we're very excited about that. And this will allow us also to work towards our sustainability goals by being able to kind of keep some of the cold out when necessary and heat in when necessary, like right now. And so that's what we have coming up. This is phase two of our master plan for the exterior project.
And we know you very well, but for the public, will you introduce yourself, please?
Oh, I'm so sorry. I thought I was famous. I apologize. Natasha Delo, Senior Center Coordinator. My apologies. Any questions?
No questions. Excited about that, the renovations.
Next project is landfill equipment building, so this is a new building out at the landfill to allow for covered storage for equipment. It's currently underway. The concrete is in, so we're kind of, we're waiting for delivery of the building. Anticipate that construction will fit in shop later this year.
Hey, Julie Seidel Johnson, Director of Parks and Recreation. Next one is rec center improvements. And these are projects like the roofs of the rec center, structural cables, tuck pointing, different things that need to be done for the facility to keep it operating well. Terrill Mill Skate Park Design is nearly complete. We are waiting because we have received a Federal Land and Water Conservation Fund Grant, and it needs to be signed off on by the National Park Service before we can proceed. We're probably a couple of months away from that actually still happening. So it will likely have construction late summer, early fall of next year. The Mercer Ball Field Improvement is now a combined project with the Iowa City Community School District. This is improvements to Field One, which is now the varsity baseball field for City High. And then changes to Field Four, which will become the varsity softball field. Improvements to the public areas and the common spaces between the fields, ADA improvements, entry improvements, a shelter. A lot of small miscellaneous things just to make that a cleaner, better facility.
Can you describe the sharing of resources to construct that between the school district and the city?
I don't have the exact dollar amounts with me. We are paying for only the central area that comes up, the pathway between the diamonds. We're paying for the common area around the concession area, the restrooms. The school district is completely paying for everything having to do with Field One and Field Four renovations. Next one is College Green Park. This has been bid with construction. We'll start as soon as we have good spring weather. It has a black and gold basketball theme with a new basketball court and a black and gold playground that we place there. Court Hill Trail has also been bid and will take place in the spring. This is from Beach Street to Scott Boulevard as replacement. The new park development is on Shannon Drive, and as you remember, we named this the Adelaide Joy Rogers Park. A small purple playground going in and out there along with a shelter and and a small circular path that will take place this spring.
The next project is the Annual Payment Rehabilitation, and for two thousand and twenty-four, that included Park Road, which we wrapped up this fall. The remaining section is a portion of Benton Street just east of Gilbert Street, looking at completing that here this spring once the weather turns. Onto Dubuque Street Reconstruction, the majority of that product is complete. Really, the outstanding items there are the lighting. We actually received some of the poles. They were, had some issues with the paint, and so we had to get those repainted. That's currently in process. We expect to have the poles back in our possession here probably early February with the goal of having that constructed or or installed by the end of February. Muscatine Avenue Pedestrian Crossing, so this is one that's been around for a little bit. This is, you may remember, a project where we are coordinating with Iowa State University to install conductive concrete. And so with that, we've been working through that process. It's a bit of a unique situation and and a lot of kind of back and forth as we've worked through that process. The goal would be to have that constructed here in two thousand and twenty-five.
Next project is the Digestor Complex Rehabilitation. So this is the work on the digestors, which are original to the plant. And then the next project is the Digestor Gas Improvement, so that'll be the renewable natural gas component where we'll clean the gas and inject it into the pipeline.
And the final project in this category is Fire Station Two Roof Replacement, so that's one that we anticipate getting underway here later this year. With that, we'll move on to the annual section, so these are those products that have regular money each year within the program. The first one being the Fiber Infill and Cameras Project, and so this is a account that we use to take advantage of opportunities we have for either our projects or partnering with other projects to install fiber optic cable or cameras in locations that we've identified that there's a need. The Annual Stormwater Improvements, this is an account that we use to repair existing storm stormwater infrastructure, typically intakes, pipe, that kind of thing. Usually, it's in locations where we've identified sinkholes or other needs that come up throughout the year.
Next project is City Hall Other Projects, the smaller projects we hear within City Hall. The next few years is all about heating and cooling systems and the computer system that make those function correctly. And eventually, some improvements to the Employee Fitness Room a few years out, but primarily H V A C and B A S improvements. Park Annual Improvements is next. This is what money we have for smaller projects. The new park signs that have been put out in the parks in the last three or four years have all been done through Park Annual Improvement. We also use it for matching funds for part, small partner things such as projects with the youth sports associations and other things that arise throughout the year. Inner City Bike Trails and Bridges, this one is one that has grown, as you'll see in the budget numbers here. We are at the point where a lot of our trails and bridges are at that twenty, twenty-plus year mark. We found a lot of bridges that need considerable amount of work quickly, so this will be looking at some of those bridges and trails that just need to be built, rebuilt where they're at. No new trails, just replacement and refurbishments. Annual Rec Center Improvement, similar to what I said before, a lot of the things like tuck pointing, the roofs, things that happen that just keep the building envelope stable for the building. Annual Tree Contract Grant Planting, this is a little lower than it has been in other years, but we have planted about a thousand trees per year for the last several years. Keeping those growing, keeping them maintained is one thing. So it's a little lower this year as we have filled in a lot of the areas. We're still concentrating on areas where trees have been taken out due to Emerald Ashbore or construction projects. But it's a little bit less this year.
The Annual Traffic Signal Projects, this is what we use to replace aging signal equipment that's just reached the end of its useful life or is no longer supported. We also use this if we need to install new signals. So again, it kind of depends on need there in in the given year. Traffic Calming, this is the money that we use to install traffic calming installations that go through that community pro, or program and kind of work their way through all of that, those steps through the M P O. Once those are approved, then we use this money to actually install those measures.
Earlier this year, we discussed there's some sort of procedural changes for how traffic calming measures are implemented. We still intend on doing traffic measures, but just the process is different and the budget remains the same. Am I understanding that correctly, or?
Yes, we have a backlog of projects that that have been previously approved that have gone through the old process, and so we've cut off applications for new. So a lot of the funding that you'll see go out the door in the next year is just looking back at what's already been approved. And then the M P O staff along with the engineering staff are developing new program criteria that's probably going to emphasize different approaches than strictly speed bumps and and the pillows and things like that, so more pedestrian accommodations. I should should note, too, the M P O, we as a region did get a Safe Streets for All Grant, which is going to give us a complete kind of evaluation of the road network in Johnson County. That'll help us prioritize where those improvements.
Does that grant focus on vehicular safety, pedestrian safety, or both?
I believe it's all modes. Does that sound right? I think it's all modes of traffic.
I guess I'll ask the question, is there any opportunity to look at some of the ones that have been approved? If we learn new information and have some new opportunities, where we could re-approach that?
Sure, you know, there's, those were all the result of neighborhood driven kind of initiatives. So we would have to go back and explain why we might be changing our approach, but yeah, we haven't bid those out yet.
Yeah, I think for me, it would be up to staff to, I would like staff to review them, and then based on new information from the grant, maybe we can revisit some of those and find better solutions.
Okay.
The next one is our curb ramp program, so this is what we use to go into locations and replace either, or I guess install ramps where there's not ramps or replace ramps that don't meet current requirements. So our focus, or our primary focus is to install ramps where there are no ramps, and then we kind of work our way down to replace those that may have ramps but just aren't up to compliance. The Annual Pavement Rehabilitation, so this is our overlay program, but also includes our P C C patching program. So really, it's more of a kind of just street rehab and repair program that we use annually. Underground Electrical Facilities, this is the money that we use typically in in coordination with other projects to move utilities underground. We work with Mid-American. There's kind of a program or a process that we work through with them to move their lines underground as well as communication lines and other lines that are hanging on those poles. Like I said, typically, that's in conjunction with some of our other reconstruction projects typically.
Jason?
Oh. I was going to ask, I know Dodge Street, as it gets reconstructed, there's been, you know, requests for us to bury lines. Does that end up coming out of this fund or actually out of the Dodge Street Reconstruction Fund?
Buries, I don't know how finance always does it. A lot of times, I've seen it where we'll take money from this account, move it into the project account to cover those expenses.
I just had a question about the, over the five years, some of the budgeted amounts are escalating, like the pavement rehab. And I appreciate that based on the pavement condition report we've gotten and how that's all been mapped out over time. But just curious about how sometimes, like this one, it's just the same amount over five years and how that doesn't just sort of trap us into as prices increase, you know, we're we're doing less every year.
I could take a stab at at this one in particular. I believe this is a percentage of our utility franchise fee, which is pretty stagnant. So this is just an estimate. As that revenue source remains stagnant, that contribution to the undergrounding is also stagnant. But you're right, we lose, we lose kind of purchasing power over time with that one. For the other ones, it's really just an annual evaluation of what is needed. So for example, we're going to get to the Bicycle Master Plan next. We've accumulated a larger fund balance in there because we haven't needed to spend all of that money. So we might scale that back for a little bit to draw down that fund balance. Whereas other projects are spending all those dollars, like the the pavement rehab could be an example of that. When it comes time to, or when we talk about rec center improvements or park improvements, if we know that there's expenses coming up, we'll try to grow those. Otherwise, we just have to look at the big picture with all the projects in there and make some tough decisions when we're building our recommendation.
One more question about this. I'm really excited to see how the Court Street Reconstruction works with the shared underground utility conduit. Is this fund also, do we rely on this fund also to do any of that work? Or is that sort of a novel experiment right now to create shared pathways for fiber optic cables to avoid some of the extra disruptions?
I believe this would contribute to that, you know. The joint utility trench is something we've done in other locations. This one's a little different in that we're the ones kind of leading that that charge. Part of that is due to lessons learned on past projects, maybe not so much from our end, but from the utility side of things. In the past, they kind of took the lead and apparently learned that they didn't like the lead on that. And so I think we like the idea. I think we think it's a good idea. And so in order to do that, in order to facilitate that, we've had to take the lead on the the Court Street one. So it's the first one we've done in that way, but it's not the first joint utility trench we've done.
And are, do those have any potential for actually being minimally revenue generating or at least self-sustaining where the lease value is something that the utilities pay for and that supports the next project and the next project? Is that, is that a possibility?
So typically, the way it works is that we, they'll, the utilities that use the the ducts immediately will pay for the cost of it. So they'll pay their portion of the project to cover kind of the ducts that they're going to use. We typically install some extra ones, and so how we use those, you know, will probably just depend on future need and what opportunities might be there. There would be potential to lease those or or other options.
So it's a one-time cost. It's not a recurring cost to use the the raceway or conduit pathway?
For the utilities that are in there right away, correct.
They just pay once, and it's theirs to use.
Essentially, what we're saying is you need to relocate. We're willing to to do the work for you, but you need to pay us back for it. So it becomes their conduit immediately.
One question, when when Council Burgen's asked her question, and I heard Jeff's response of let's purchase some power. So for the total budget amount for this item, only this current budget that we're considering for funds in two thousand and twenty-six, only two hundred and seventeen thousand is what's in this current budget that is allocated. And for, I guess for, to clarify my question, for two thousand and twenty-nine, that this, that actual money of two seventeen will come up in that in that discussion during two thousand and twenty-eight, or I guess it would be actually two thousand and twenty-nine in January. So the money for two thousand and twenty-nine has not been, even though it's expected a part of the budget, the total budget there, it won't really be in the budget until that year. Okay, I wanted to make sure I understood that correctly.
The other thing I'd like to mention with the undergrounding of electrical facilities, this is a, this, this is a revenue stream that's dedicated specifically for that. But we spend far more per year on undergrounding than is reflected in here. So when you see like a Court Street or a Rochester where we're undergrounding those utilities, some of those costs could be incurred by the the geo bonds that we're issuing to support that project. So this is really a supplemental fund that allows us to do a little bit more, stretch our dollars a little bit further. But it's not representative of the cost of truly undergrounding all that we do in a given year.
And my question really wasn't specific to this. It was just to the funding source and when we actually allocate that whatever that year's budgeted amount is.
All right, the Bicycle Master Plan Implementation, so this is an account that we use to essentially implement those products that were outlined in the master plan and do that annually. The Annual Bridge Maintenance and Repair, like the name says, you know, this is what we use to repair bridges. You know, we've used this funding to do some re-replacement bridges as well. So again, it just kind of depends on need, needs that are identified in a given year.
Your dots on Iowa Avenue. Are we fixing Iowa Avenue?
So that is one that will be probably under consideration here in the coming years. We don't have anything identified specifically at this time.
Good afternoon, Darian Nagelgam, Director of Transportation Services. The first item I'm going to discuss is the Parking Facility Restoration and Repair, and this is the fund that we use to perform repairs and ongoing preventative maintenance for our parking facilities. We do a five-year study. We have a contractor come in and do a deep dive into our facilities and set a five-year plan basically for improvements, again, both repairs and preventative maintenance. And we also use this fund to address more emergent repairs that come up. This year, we're going to be working on Capitol Street Ramp. You're going to see some closures and some creative detouring within that ramp over the next four months or so as we repair some T stems, so those are in the ceiling. Those are things that were not on our radar when the original five-year plan was developed. But again, with the age and condition of our facilities, we are having things pop up kind of in between the actual study periods. As part of that- As part of that, regular occurring repairs, scheduled repairs this year, we're going to be working at Dubuque Street. And again, that's anything from joint repair to concrete sealant, some of that preventative maintenance to help them last longer. All right, the next item is the transit interchange and bus stop improvements. And this has been an ongoing project that we're getting underway this year, but we have been setting money aside to begin to focus on our transit infrastructure. So what the users, what our customers experience when they go out to the bus stops and also focusing on the downtown as well. So our plan is to do a formal survey, to have one of our consultants assist us with doing a formal survey of every bus stop in town. So we're gonna get a sense for what facilities we have out there currently in terms of ADA, in terms of accessibility, in terms of connectivity, in terms of transit amenities, you know, things such as shelters and trash cans and that sort of thing. And we're going to build a plan to improve all of our stops across the community. Not every stop will have every amenity, but this will be a process to help us understand what types of amenities are best suited for which bus stops and develop a plan so we can come back in the future and use some of this funding to help, to help make those infrastructure changes that we need to, to make our stops more comfortable for the public.
The main interchange is, I mean, the city of Iowa City's, but also Cambus uses it as well as Cora Bill. Do they have budgeted money to participate in improving the main interchange?
I am not aware if they have budgeted money, but I do know that we have begun to have conversations with our transit partners about the potential for shared improvements in that area. It's certainly one that we all use a little bit differently, we stage a little bit differently, but certainly having some concerted effort to make the transit interchange better for all three systems, I think, would be wise. So that's something that we are hoping to start those discussions. I think the broader Iowa City-specific community bus stops are what we're tackling first. I think the interchange is gonna be a bigger, bigger project, potentially.
So maybe related to Mayor Teague's question, if we were to get sort of allocations from other cities towards a project, it would show up as an expense in this budget, but it would be a capital inflow showing up elsewhere? Is that how we would see that? Are these only our expenditures?
Want to describe how governmental contribution?
Yeah, it depends on how the agreement is written, but generally, it would be an expenditure on our side and then you would see it as a contribution or intergovernmental revenue in the other cities.
And finally, the annual sewer main replacement project. So this is what we use to repair the existing sanitary sewer system, you know, pipes, manholes, those kinds of things. We also do our pipelining project out of this. So that's a way to, a cost-effective way to extend the life of pipes that are in, still in relatively good shape. If there's no questions on that, we'll move on to airport.
All right, good afternoon, I'm Mike Tharp, I'm the airport manager. The airport individual projects begin on page 523. And to start with, I think it's important to understand how airport projects are financed. We really have three main pots of money that we're dealing with. We have the FAA, which when they participate in projects, provide 90% of the project costs. We have the state Iowa DOT, when they participate in projects, they provide anywhere from 70% to 85% of the project costs, depending on the project and the type of project that it is. And then we have our local match funds, which is $100,000 that we get from the general levy fund. If we do not get grant funds in a given year that we're expecting or trying to go after, these projects do not move forward. We do not have the cash to replace missing grant money. With that, our first project up is airport apron expansion, based on FAA formulas and our traffic and busy day operations. We have a formula that tells us we should have a parking apron about three times the size that we currently do now. So this is a project to get that apron up to that kind of dimension. The next one is runway 725 pavement repairs. This is kind of midlife pavement repairs, where we go and route the joints out, reseal them, patch up any cracks in the runway panels, just general pavement maintenance to make sure our runways are in good condition and continue to be in good condition for aircraft. Runway 1230 pavement repairs, same process, just different runway and broken out so that we're expecting from the FAA two different grant programs. Our terminal building and remodel and reconstruction, this is one that came from the bipartisan infrastructure law that Congress passed in 2020. Within that program, there is a dedicated fund for airports to modernize, do things with airport terminal buildings. We have tried to utilize that fund and go after grant funding the last couple of years and have been unsuccessful so far. There is one more opportunity we're anticipating this fall. And so for now, that project still shows up, but we'll see a couple of projects down the road. We're anticipating doing things with the existing building, expecting the existing building to be around for a while. The airport solar, this would actually be phase two of our solar project. Phase one is online and running, we're real happy about that. This phase would turn our maintenance hangar and our research hangar that is operated by the university and being the last couple of buildings that are occupied on a regular basis and turn those utilities over to solar power. Taxiway maintenance, crack and sealing repairs, again, same thing, kind of midlife pavement maintenance type activity where we're crack sealing, taking care of pavement panels that might be cracked or damaged and just making sure we have good pavement for another decade or two. HVAC upgrade, this is one of those projects where, again, assuming we do not get money for the terminal building as a whole, we have a wonderful 1951 building that has all kinds of 1951 issues. So one of the first things we're gonna start tackling is trying to do some HVAC upgrades to get better efficiencies and trade out some old technology for current standards. Fuel storage, tank fill cabinet replacement, this is one. The cabinet infrastructure is about 30 years old and just kind of due for replacement. It also houses our fuel filters, so when we get loads of fuel from delivery trucks, it goes through that system. And we're hoping to clean up that a little bit and make it a little bit simpler and more effective, so we have good fuel. The wildlife assessment, you may recall this fall where we had an elk in the area running around town. It also made an appearance at the airport and caused a little bit of a conundrum. We weren't exactly sure how to handle it at first. Thankfully, we were able to chase it off with a truck and let it go do elk things, not at the airport. But this is an avenue, what happens is we'll have a USDA wildlife inspector come in for about a year at the airport. They'll monitor all of the animal activity that happens at the airport. And it sets us up for better grant opportunities to help manage that wildlife activity and deter wildlife from coming onto the airport in the first place.
Does our insanely high deer population in Iowa City help you get grants?
It, not so far, but it continues to be an area of concern. And then the tractor broom, this is a piece of equipment that we want for our new tractor and we've actually got on order already. In days like this where we get dustings of snow, that's just enough to slicken everything up, but not enough to really throw plows at. It helps us clean the runways and other pavements so that aircraft can utilize normal landing distances as opposed to adding more safety margins to their operations. And that is the airport CIP program.
All right, up next is fire.
I just have a general question that may be what my colleagues are asking. These that are slated as 2025, is that calendar 25 with the first half of fiscal year '26?
Correct. You should be thinking calendar year when you see these numbers.
Thank you.
Okay, great.
Good afternoon, Council, Scott Lion, Fire Chief. The first item that you have up there is a replacement of one of our ladder trucks. It's a Quint, it lives out at Station 4. It is at the point where it's beyond its useful life and in need of repair. Station 5 and Station 3, construction and replacement. I believe this is an item that has been tabled pursuant to the earlier budget conversations. The rehab of the sleeping area and fire station alerting at Station 1. Happy to report that this project is kicking off as we speak. We've relocated, relocated some staff already and really look forward to improving the living conditions for our staff and should get done hopefully around July. And then lastly, we have the flooring and furniture at Station 1 on the first floor. The carpet is beyond help at this point and it needs to be replaced, as does the office furniture on the first floor of the building.
Regarding the Fire Station 5 and 3 replacement, I know we learned that 5 is sort of off the table, basically. But 3 is still something that needs to be replaced and 1. Are that, is that, will we eventually see that Z4411 be reallocated to Fire Station 1 and 5? Is that the expectation?
Yeah, so the, the funding source behind the Fire Station 5 and 3 that you see right there, it's slated in the facility reserve, which again, does not, is projected to have zero balance after the City Park Pool project. And with the budget the way it is, we are not running any surpluses. We don't anticipate running surpluses, so the facility reserve is probably going to be a dormant fund for a while, which means if we want to pursue a project like this, we're looking at a referendum, a vote to get the borrowing capacity to be able to do that. With, with the budget conditions projected kind of as is for the next several years, the chief and his team are gonna have to really start thinking about how we can best serve the community in the four station model. And that may include the rehab of 3, but it also, and also will include the relocation of 1. We've got some work to do to find the property to be able to do that. But I would say Station 1 is kind of rising to the top of the priority list now. The decision whether to rehab 3 in place, I'm not sure. I'm quite ready to tell you what the best option is because if, if budget conditions do change and they do improve, we might revisit this 3-5 combo. But if they don't, it probably lends itself to a rehab type situation. I'm sorry, chief, did?
No, that's completely accurate.
Okay, and 1 is probably ahead of 3 and should it show up within five years in a capital improvement?
We don't have a funding source for it, we also don't have the land for it. So typically, we wouldn't put anything in with that level of questioning. But it, no, we probably wouldn't put it in. If we were to identify land and we were comfortable moving to a referendum, that's when you would start to see it move in there.
Hey, thank you.
Library is up next.
Hello, thanks for the time this afternoon, I'm Ellsworth Carmen, the library director. This project looks familiar to most of you. It was first introduced by the previous library director, Susan Craig, in 2017 and is to replace the carpet and some sort of integrated furnishing, built-in furnishing at the library. The replacement cost in 2017 was estimated at $700,000. I've sort of built that up over the years of this request and requested $940,000 this year. You'll see the current funding is at 805, which includes $55,000 from gift-controlled funds at the library. So that may mean a scope change, but we'll, we'll make that money go as far as we can and we're really excited to have this project happening. It's replacing original carpet from 2004 and we've had around 13 million people in and out of the building since then. So it has served its purpose, it's been well-maintained, but should be a relatively straightforward project once it gets kicked off. So we're, we're really excited that it's coming into fruition.
Do you anticipate continuing to serve the public while putting in the carpet? Because I know that that's kind of laborious.
It's a really good question. The intention is to do both the first and second public floor areas, which would probably mean a staged closing of certain, certain areas while the work is being done. If, it depends on sort of what the contracted vendors prefer as far as moving the materials. But I think there's a pretty good chance that we would still have things accessible, even if that meant a staff retrieving items for the public. With our size facility, if we, if we didn't have a floor accessible, we would be able to have the staff available to do that, that running. So I think that the physical disruption would be relatively significant while the work was being done, but the material access, we could probably maintain.
And do you have a sense of how long the project would be, I mean, has that been scoped out?
I think it would be, my guess would be, as far as disruptive work, could be two or three weeks at sort of on the longer end, but it depends on a few different factors. Our preference is to go with like tile carpet instead of broadloom carpet, which makes the installation a little bit quicker. And so there are certain things that I think we would opt for that would make that more seamless.
Do you know if there's currently tile carpet there now?
Most of it is not, no.
Great, thanks.
Next is senior center.
Good afternoon again, Latasha Deloche, Senior Center Coordinator. You'll see two phases here and some of that is kind of a budgetary way in which we're paying for this, but it's looking mostly at our interior work that's needed. For instance, we have areas in our building where the carpet hasn't been replaced in 40 years to just mechanical plumbing things. We just haven't had this level of renovation in the 40-some years we've been there, 44 exactly this year. So we haven't had some of these major changes. So with painting, it's also putting in some work into our historic areas like the lobby, just maintaining some of those things, bringing down wallpaper that's kind of already coming down, but getting it all the way down and cleaned up and painted. Also, wayfinding, as you all know, as we work more with older adults, there's diminished capacity. We need to have things a little bit more color-coded, as well as signage a little bit clearer so that people can navigate the building as that happens throughout time. So we also want to look at different projects from the ADA study that we had in the master plan and just implement those different things to kind of help us to be able to better serve not only seniors, but also the public that utilizes the space. Questions?
I was gonna ask about the kitchen, but I wasn't sure which one that was, phase one or phase two?
It probably would go into phase two versus we have more of those mechanical plumbing type things that need to. The project that people won't see as much, but they'll feel, those projects will need to go first as a priority, just for comfort. And then probably later on in that process, we'll see what we can do with the kitchen. We have a couple of ideas with our master plan of things we can do. We'll have to revisit that and see how that might look, given that there's so many community kitchens coming out now. But ours was more looking at it being a learning space and a way to be able to better serve seniors. As you all know, we have a large pantry, so it may be some opportunities to make some adjustments there to kind of better house some of our pantry items that we get as we partner with table-to-table.
Just a couple of notes on the senior center. The master plan, which would have been presented to you probably three years ago, maybe, those expenses that were estimated to meet all project goals were probably closer to 15 million. So this is a very slim budget for a facility of this size. It'll be difficult to stretch these dollars, but we certainly will do the best we can. And I know that there's a lot of generous people that probably will step up to help support from a private fundraising to help us stretch it even further. But as you can see from some of the pictures that were presented, and if you've just been in the facility, you do know the carpet is probably 20 years past its life and that some of just the basic needs are gonna have to be addressed prior to. some of just the, the basic needs are going to have to be addressed prior to some of the more ambitious goals that we had set for this facility. We still have a 1.3 million dollar limit on what we can borrow for this project and that's why there's two distinct projects. So you can see the, the funding source in both of them are higher than that amount, but the way we plan to finance this is to bond the full amount for each project, phase one and phase two, 1.3 million, and then utilize TIF. So we would essentially have to amend the urban renewal plan to include the rehabilitation of the senior center as a goal of that urban renewal plan. And then we would utilize tax increment financing dollars from the larger district to supplement what we can bond. To, to get more aggressive than that, similar to the fire station, would require a community referendum and 60% voter approval.
The next category will be parks.
All right, Julie Seidel Johnson, Parks and Rec Director. We start with another trail segment along highway six. We've been gradually building the trail along highway six piece by piece. This is the next segment. The next one's city park pool. We are eight days away from final plans and they'll be here a week from Friday. It is the three pool concept. We do, we plan to set the public hearing at the first council meeting in February and take bids later February with the bid date in mid-March. Fingers crossed. It's exciting to get this far, but fingers crossed on many things with that project. The Palisades Park development is a small area of neighborhood open space that we've received, we haven't received yet, but are expecting to receive on the kind of the north side of the community, a very small park up there. This would develop it with a small playground and shelter. City park shelters and restroom replacement. This is kind of a full-on renovation of both upper and lower city park. A lot of the shelters are older and reaching the end of their serviceable life, so we will be taking most of those older ones out and replacing them, consolidating them, consolidating some of the restrooms, replacing some of the restrooms and others will be going away. There's kind of a full plan with that. With the city park pool project, the upper city park restrooms will be attached to the pool building. So lots of changes happening there. Napoleon Park softball, this is renovations of fields five through eight to make them safer and more playable. This is laser grading them. This is working on kind of renovating all the dugouts and areas, public areas around that.
Julie, will you, is there any possibility or talk of expanding restroom facilities or so they're not all in that one that's all the way in, you know?
At city park?
No, no, Napoleon.
Oh, Napoleon, there's two, right?
There's, perhaps?
Yeah, we had, we had actually proposed a capital improvement project to, to do restroom renovations. That's not included in this five through eight. It was not, it's on the unfunded list at this point, but that's when that would be addressed, both at looking at Napoleon and then city park baseball as well, looking at renovating those restrooms eventually.
And I will say, it's actually been a few years since I've been at Napoleon, but I just remember that it was essentially like if you were at field, you know, up closest by the animal shelter, then you had to walk all the way down to.
Yeah, so.
That was a couple of years ago, so I digress. I'm glad it's on the list.
It's on the list. It's not funded yet, but on the list. Event, facility improvements. This is the fund that we use for both Terry True Blood Lodge and the Riverside Festival Stage. This particular project would just fund, believe it or not, just this restaining of that building. Very pretty building, but very expensive to maintain. You have to re-stain it approximately every five years. We have not done it yet. The building is probably 10 or 15 years old and hasn't been done yet, so we're playing a little catch-up out there with that. Benton Hill, the next park is the playground replacement. This is one of about five parks left to be renovated as part of the 2017 park master plan that we talked about during the operating budget. So we're just about done with fulfilling all of our list of park renovations, but Benton Hill is one of the next ones. We've already had a few neighborhood meetings with neighbors in that park, a very active group out there. So we've done some tree planting and some kind of things intermittently in that park, but this would take care of the playground and ADA accessibility to it.
I believe we spoke about this earlier this year, the sort of challenges of Benton Hill Park and there's no sidewalks there. Is there any planning to, to work on that or is that something we've said, no, it's just too complex?
So the sidewalk along Benton, there's issues with the topography and the safety of the sidewalk, if I remember correctly. So not along the south side of Benton Street there.
Yeah, that sidewalk would be pretty tough to get in there. I mean, especially with the grades, you'd probably be talking about quite a bit of retaining walls and whatnot to, to do that.
And loss of trees. There's a lot of big mature trees right along there. Okay. The next project is ADA improvements to our elevators. This is both Robert A. Lee Rec Center and City Hall. Nothing too glamorous here, but braille, voice commands, other things that'll make it more accessible in the elevator systems. North Market Square is another one of the parks that has not yet been touched by the 2017 master plan. There's interest with the school district to partner on this, this project with some of the playground equipment. Obviously, the school right next door uses it for their, a lot of their recess time and the neighborhood is very active there too. So I'm sure this will be a very interesting project as we move forward with that.
Julie, I'm sorry, I have one more question. Thinking of the fact that there was earlier discussion about the, with the baseball diamonds that the school district was helping because of the shared, I mean, if this is something that the man is using as part of, you know, for their kiddos, is there any contribution?
They are doing, they've indicated they will be paying for some of the new equipment that we place in, especially some of the more adaptive, inclusive equipment. We haven't really gotten that far in the conversations beyond that.
Okay, no, that, it sounds like that's a good start.
Reno Street Park is another one that, this is one of the last ones that does not truly have the ADA access from the street up to the playgrounds, up to the playground area or the shelter. So that's one thing that will happen there, likely a playground replacement, although it is not as old as some of our others. And some improvements to the community garden space would be included in the Reno Street renovations. West Side Park, this is the part of the land acquisition for Carson Lake, I believe, the Carson Lake area in that park. Mercer Shelter, this is simply the replacement of the park shelter next to the large playground at Mercer. Park Storage Building, this is a pool building at, likely going to be placed at the soccer complex. It's not heated, doesn't have plumbing. It'll just be very much a winter shelter type area for our parks' equipment. Pretty simple, but something that we lack for getting all of our equipment indoors during the winter. The next one is the actual building of the park. You just saw the land acquisition and this is actually building the park area around the Carson Lake retention area.
This would actually be for the actual lake construction.
Sorry. We have like three projects on this site, so. Okay, the next one's coming later. I thought it had a different picture, that's why I was confused. Robert A. Lee, this is structural cables. So Robert A. Lee, after it was built, my understanding is it shifted the building itself. So they had to come back and put structural cables around the outside. You can see that when you're over there, you see them in the pool. We've had them evaluated. There's a few that, especially in the pool area, that will need to be replaced sooner rather than later. So this will replace the ones that need to be replaced. This is what holds the building from shifting any further. Maybe Josh can elaborate more on what it does.
This is not conventional in any way. We've never seen it anywhere else and the idea of a metal cable in a chlorine-rich environment is really peculiar, so.
The next one is more of our HVAC replacements. At Mercer, we have worked on the indoor pool area, we've worked on the gym area, but that leaves the center area, the lobby, the meeting rooms, the fitness room. This is HVAC replacement there. And then at Robert A. Lee, the replacement of the gym heating and cooling unit.
For these HVAC replacement projects, Julie, what, are they typically one-for-one whereby if we have an existing gas-fired units, we replace them with gas-fired units or is, are there provisions for upgrading to fully electric for any of these?
It has been typically one-for-one, but we are more and more looking at the options for doing all-electric. In fact, I don't know if we've mentioned that, but city park pool, the pool building itself will have all-electric heat for the water heating and, and the heating of the community room, not the pool water or the, the filter house area, but that. So it's something we look at with each and every project now.
And it's always the goal to get there if the council budgets the proper amount of money or is it more nuanced than that?
I guess a little more nuanced than that and it's probably more than I know about it actually, so. Next one is a columbarium. So at the cemetery, this is where we inter the cremains and we are quickly selling out of our current area that we have for this. So this would expand it nearly double in size. We have more spaces to sell for that. Another part of the Robert A. Lee roof. We started a project, so we looked at Robert A. Lee, we looked at the Mercer roof and we looked at City Hall roof. At this point in time, we finished the Mercer roof over the gymnasium and we finished parts of the City Hall roof, the parts that needed the repair the worst. We hope the next project will be to go back and do the pool area over Mercer. That leaves Robert A. Lee as this funding in this line for that, those repairs there. This project would add a new and better disinfectant system to our two indoor pools. It's a UV disinfectant system. It kind of amps up chlorine and what chlorine does to the pool, becoming more and more widely recommended by health departments across the nation as we deal with things like cryptosporidium and some other nasty bugs in the water. So this would look to upgrade those in the two indoor pools. Not necessarily going to do it at the new city park pool though, however, because sunlight does it more at the outdoor pools than the indoor ones.
Is this something that the swimmers would see or something that the water travels through pipes that?
Yeah, it happens, it happens internally in the pipes back in the filter room. Salespeople will tell you the water will feel more silky and smooth. I don't know if anyone can actually feel that or not, but. Tuck Pointing at Mercer Scanlon is, is the next project, just exterior renovations there. And then another roof project at Mercer Scanlon, the next one is the, as I said, the area over the center. We had the HVAC on the central area, the locker rooms, the lobby. This is the roof over that particular area. Next project here in City Hall and the police station is a small office remodel. You have a cubicle space there, but that will, I believe, turn it into a full office space with walls around it. City Hall fire alarm and strobe updates. So we had a fire alarm test recently and realized that it wasn't working in all areas of the city hall at all times. So we've done some necessary repairs to make it safe for right now, but also realized it did not always have, did not have strobe and the, some of the alarms in certain areas either. So this project will make it all better throughout all areas so everyone can see and hear when the fire alarms go off in this building. Harlock Hill is a very small playground we have, kind of behind the Hox Nest. Is that right? Yeah, the Hox Nest student housing area. Just a small playground that needs replaced and then ADA access. Park paving improvements. We've, I mentioned earlier that our trails are aging. Got a couple of big parking lots that are also aging too. The first one being, as you're looking here at Mercer Athletic, we've done some work on the smaller parking lot closer to the rec center building, but that athletic parking lot has not had that area. The other one that we're looking at is Scott Park. We found that may, we may have a different, that may come up differently before we get to it into 2029. We had some neighborhood open space funds become available in that area, but we have that. We also have paving of the roads in lower city park that needs to be addressed and eventually the parking at Terry True Blood. So any place you see a big parking lot, that's something that we haven't necessarily planned very well for, that we're trying to bring online for the planning in the capital projects.
Are those resurfacings or reconstructions?
Some of them are reconstructions. So we would resurface first if possible, but some of them have reached the point that that's probably not going to be an option. I would look to these smart individuals next to me to answer those questions.
Yeah, I think it's just going to be based on condition and obviously if we can rehab it, it'll be a good candidate, that would be preferred, but there's just some that are probably to the point where reconstruction is the only real good option.
And from a cost perspective, that's not good news, but from a, maybe designing them to manage water better is a very good thing because I know that older parking lots don't manage water well, so.
Hey, this is a big one you may not have expected. We have a lot of issues with keeping the Ped Mall fountain operating. With the renovations of the Ped Mall a few years ago, it was somewhat addressed, but not completely. And so our government building staff spends a lot of time just trying to keep it up and running. This project will look at rebuilding it, not only the internal parts, but the other part is that the tiles on the upper level are set in sand and so you get a lot of vehicular, vehicular traffic through the Ped Mall with deliveries and, and construction and that different things. It cracked the surface. Have you noticed there's lots of cracked things? So we're going to look at some different options for paved or stamped concrete or some other things to make that a better situation. Make the surge tank probably larger. Part of we have, it burns out the motors quite often, it just doesn't have the recall of the water that it probably should. So a lot of different things to happen, but pretty much a full rebuild of a fountain to make it look similar and very similar to what it looks like now, but just operate more efficiently and better.
Is that the right spot for that fountain? I know it had been there for years and the Ped Mall was reconstructed around that, but it's always felt strange to me that it's right where the stage is and it's right where people would drive if they need to do maintenance. Like is that, is there a study to sort of confirm that that's the right spot? I mean, I think, I see people use it and they love it, but it also seems like a long-term problem in that exact location and also programmatically strange where it's right at that stage location.
And do we know how many times in at least the past 30 years has been like reconstructed?
It just, yeah. I don't know though, at this point, we're obviously not going to design it up here, but I just, I just, like, I hit, this sort of feels problematic.
You realize there's a vault under the grant, underground for the, for the equipment there and there's, you know, water service and electric already there. So moving it would be pretty substantial. That'd be my only concern.
Sure.
Yeah, we would have looked at that during the, the Ped Mall design, right? We went through a master plan for the entire downtown and then we would have zeroed in on all the individual projects, including the, the master plan of the Ped Mall and boy, there, there may have been some really early discussions on whether that was the right spot, but we quickly landed on leaving it there. It, it is a, I mean, anytime the stage is used, we have to turn it off, but I don't think that's been overly burdensome for us. The connectivity with the playground is really nice. Kids can kind of go back and forth. The proximity to the library, I think, is nice. So I, I think it works, I think it works well.
Breaks all the time where it's at too, though, that's.
Well, we had some challenges. Do you want to jump in and Ron and kind of just explain the, the difference pre and post renovation there?
I think so. I think the, the issue that we're still trying to work through is as we were entering into the Ped Mall reconstruction, we quickly learned that the state treats the, these types of splash pads as pools. And so as a part of our project, we had to do a change order that actually upgraded the chlorine system as far as the disinfection system. And so it was a kind of a quick fix to that location. And I think we're still trying to work through what impact that chlorination system has on the, the tiles and the mortar system that's there in the, in, in the actual splash pad. And so I think we're still trying to work, that, that's what we're trying to figure out is, you know, is, is, you know, is it really the, the chlorine and is that attacking the mortar in between the tiles? That's, you know, the granite tiles that's actually creating the issue with allowing them to move, you know? I mean, it performed very well for along the issues that are there today.
Thanks for the background on that. I just keep questioning whether it's the right spot.
I, I will tell you when my kids were little, that that was a wonderful triple threat between that, right next to the playground, right next to the library with the library bathrooms. And especially when I was flying solo and had two kids to watch, I could be in one place and watch them both, so. And have a concrete wall to sit on at the same time, so. So, so there are some, some functional advantages to that spot and, and some happy memories now that my kids are a little old for the splash fountain, but.
Now they can watch you.
And the next one is another trail project along highway six, generally from Gilbert Street to Orchard Street.
So this one really is meant to. So this one really is meant to kind of partner with the DOT's bridge project. So they will be replacing the Highway Six Bridge over the Iowa River in 2028, I believe. And so what this will do, as part of that bridge project, they'll be putting new pedestrian accommodations on the bridge. And so this will provide trail and sidewalk connections to essentially tie that into the surrounding pedestrian network. So there'll be a trail on the south side of Highway Six making those connections, as well as some needed sidewalk connections at the various intersections. With that, we'll move on to police.
Good afternoon. Denise Brotherton, Captain with the Police Department. And I have the new Chris here, which is Devon. You've met Devon before, she was one of our animal control officers. We really don't have anything too new. Our body cameras and in-car video systems, I know we've spoken about in the past, but that's just an upgrade to that, to, a lot of that to get us on the cloud, to free up storage, improve our efficiency and our communications with the county and city attorney's offices. And our, the generator has been an ongoing project. That's just been taking some time to get in the correct parts. And Devon will speak about the training annex, but we also then had to look at a generator that could also cover that additional area.
Hello. The generator project is due to start here this spring. They're hoping to start some stuff in February on the internal wiring, and then get it going in March or April, hoping to have it done by the end of the summer. The training annex is an addition funded by Friends of the Animal Center Foundation. They've started a campaign to raise the 1.2 million that it's guesstimated to take to build it. It will be a multipurpose room, so more or less an open room with drains and HVAC, all of the things that we would need that if we had another large-scale impound, we could utilize it as more area for cages or kennels. We can use it regularly as an enrichment room during the cold like this, when the dogs can't spend the time outside, we can use that for those, it can be a vent room. It will also have an overhead door that allows the animal control officers to pull their vehicles in and secure themselves inside the building before removing animals, which is especially helpful when it's problematic animals or things like that, that risk, have a higher risk of escaping.
Nice job, by the way, with the big rescue operation. Was that, was that a year ago already?
A year ago, last August.
Yeah. And the standby generator, is that like in case of storms? Is that a backup generator kind of a thing?
Yeah, the facility did not have a generator when it was built, and we've had, had issues in the past when we've lost, obviously, power during heat or cold. And they've really had to get creative to keep the critters, even with their fur. They need to be warm, and they do get snakes and iguanas and other things like that that need to be taken care of during those times. So we're pretty excited to finally, to finally get this down there. That's a real stress-inducing, obviously, thing when you know that's happening and how to care for those animals.
Great, thank you.
So you mentioned with the training annex that that's a fundraising. Is it 100% planned as fundraised?
Yes, they're funding it 100%, the building of it.
All right, moving on to Public Works, starting out at the landfill. The compost pad improvements and expansion, so this would look at providing, expanding on the existing system. Site flow improvements, this is a project that will add additional signage out there at the landfill, as well as relocation of the oil shed for better flow on the site. The future landfill cell, as it says, will be preparing for the next expansion of the landfill in the new cell that will occur next. And then moving on to the horizontal gas collectors. So this would be installing these in the current cell, so the FY23 cell, installing that for gas collection.
We're looking at future potential for an added refuse lot route. So this would be a fleet expansion for a refuse truck. And then we are looking at an early upgrade for one of our rear load packers and turning it into an automated truck.
Next up, I'm curious about the landfill cells. How quickly, how often does the city need to build new cells? And is it pretty predictable for when we have to build them? Or is, do we see major fluctuations in usage over time?
So from, we continue to see the normal use increase, unfortunately. We've kind of, it's kind of an ebbs and flows, but it's maybe 5% up, 5% down year to year as far as the garbage. What, the major impacts that are there are the natural disasters. So if, you know, if we have a large flood event, we have a tornado, where we start getting a lot of CND debris coming in, can have a major impact on what that timeframe is. Next project is looking at the potential for a recycling transfer station. So currently, we use a local vendor. We haul all our recycling there, and then they transport that to Scott County, and they do the major recycling there. This would be looking at the concept of us actually doing that somewhere, whether it's at the landfill or in town, and then hauling that ourselves to that other vendor. So basically, looking at efficiencies and operations. We've seen a large increase in the fee that our third-party vendors charging us, and so we're just trying to determine if there is a better option for us to do this work.
You mentioned it in terms of efficiencies and certainly cost is one of them. Do you see that potentially in terms of efficiencies of time and effort to do it ourselves?
Correct. So, and I guess we would have to, so, you know, we would look at this both for Iowa City and also for the other folks that come. Corogo would also be a potential participant in this as we move this forward, so.
Be interesting to see how that comes about.
Yeah, the sign changes out at the landfill. I know we just recently talked about some policy changes in hours of operation, some other couple tweaking some policies. Is that site flow related to some of those policy changes? Or was that, there's some discussion about lines out there and where people would have to go that might be different with the, who has to go across the scale and that kind of stuff?
Right, so, exactly. So we would, so when we look at the potential policy change on how we handle yard waste, as folks would then have to come across the scale versus being able to bypass the scale. So we'd be looking at those types of signage changes.
Thank you.
Out on Rundell Street, we have an existing pump station that has some equipment that's at the end of its useful life, so we'll look at replacing that. In addition to that, you can see here, the vault top is in the pedestrian path, and so we need to make some improvements there to make that ADA accessible. On River Street, we have a section that actually has a ditch that is an ongoing maintenance issue for us. So we'll look at a project here to replace that with storm sewer. And that has been a similar and ongoing issue for us. We've tried to do some spot repairs, it hasn't addressed the issue fully. So we're looking at doing a larger repair project here for an existing line of storm sewer. The equipment maintenance facility replacement, so this is the partner project with the new transit facility. So these will relocate together out to the Public Works site. Entranceway improvements, looking at softening up the interchanges of Dubuque Street and Highway One, or Dodge Street with I-80. In addition, there's the potential for some signage along Dubuque Street, kind of a welcome Iowa City sign type. This is one of the big ones, Court Street reconstruction. So this is one that is, we plan to start here, probably here in the next couple of months. So this will be a two-plus-year project, so probably two and a half years. This is for reconstruction of the section of Court Street from Muscatine Avenue through First Avenue. Dodge Street reconstruction, so this will be a partner project with the DOT. So this will be a reconstruction of Dodge Street from Burlington Street to Governor Street, similar to the other reconstructions that include not only pavement, but also utility improvements as well. Market Street and Jefferson Street two-way conversions. So this will be converting them from one-way streets to two-way streets. In addition, it includes some money to add outlets and electrical improvements.
Can you remind us? I remember the conversation about converting it to two-way. And I'm just wondering for a refresher on the logic behind it. I know that the downtown district was a big promoter of this, I think in part to help with retail, you know, and accessibility to the different retails on both sides of Market. But were there additional factors that were going into that? And can you just remind me of them?
I guess largely the, what you noted, the downtown district and the north side's advocacy for that. To get two-way traffic helps just build exposure to that business district. There's also thought that it could reduce speeds, right? When you've got two paths going in the same direction, you naturally will have a little bit higher speeds. When you're coming at each other in a, in a two-way situation, you can hopefully slow those down and could potentially also improve the bicycle network. We've got enough ride-of-way there to build nicer east-west connections there. All those things kind of come together. I think we still have some study to do on where that ends. I don't know that we're comfortable right now saying we take that past Clinton Street.
Because the university owns that?
Correct, because you can, crossing it on a two-way is different than crossing on a one-way, right? You're looking both ways as opposed to looking one-way. So when you get the really high pedestrian volumes like you have with the Clary Walkway, it may be best to keep that one-way. So there's some further study that's, that's needed with this to determine the project extent.
Sorry, at present, it's what, from Dubuque to?
It goes all the way to Madison.
Oh, okay, okay.
And the, I was gonna say, the East End, too, I assume is being studied? Because I know there's a really bizarre Rochester connection that confuses me, and I live there, so.
Anything else with this one? I know this, we've talked about the, the signals are probably 1970s vintage signals, so that's driving a lot of this higher cost is replacing all of the signals. Signals are built for one ways, they need to be reconfigured to two ways.
I know the study is important, but practical, like practically, I don't know how you can have one street that's a one-way. I think that would be difficult. Even when we see around the county building, the Jones County building, we, I often see people going the wrong way, and that's been for years since that has been there now. When we used to have, even over here on Washington Street, one-way. It took a while, but people figured that out. But I think that would be, just have that one street one-way. And I would imagine, I don't know what the university stand is on that, you know, on that one block, if they would consider it. But I think if we're going to be doing the study, certainly we would be assessing if one, that one block should be converted as well, as well as asking the university what their, if they would be amenable to that. A lot of that is more pavement, a painting than, I think, doing any other changes.
I didn't realize that they controlled the street.
They own that street.
From?
So we, we own and maintain the right-of-ways through the university campus, at least in that area. But we would still need to coordinate with the university, you know. So, yeah, so, you know, Madison Street to Market and Jefferson, those are all city streets.
Okay. So the university, just explain what their decision-making would be there?
So, since it goes to the heart of their campus, I think it's, that's the coordinating piece that we'd have to work through. The Tian Clary Walkway, you know, obviously is the major spine, you know, for.
So with this project schedule, we're really looking at maybe 26, starting the study, probably mostly in 27. So we're a couple of years away, but this is definitely on the downtown district's radar as well as the university's radar. So everybody's anticipating some, some planning discussions with this one.
And the $27 are just really the study design component?
Correct.
The next one is the North Gilbert Street reconstruction. So this is the one that we brought to you last night. This will be reconstruction of Gilbert Street from Brown to Kimball. Taffeta Avenue reconstruction, so this is from American Legion Road to Lower West Branch. This would be similar to what we did on American Legion Road, where we went from a rural cross-section to an urban cross-section, adding storm sewer as well as adding on-street bicycle lanes. Oakdale Boulevard extension alignment study. So this will be updating the study that was done a number of years ago as we've entertained potential redevelopment in this area. That's one frequent question is what does that alignment need to be? And so this will be updating that study just to give us, make sure we have the right idea of what that alignment should be. Burlington Street Bridge replacement. So this would be replacement of both of the existing bridges over the Iowa River, as well as looking at the pedestrian overpasses over Riverside Drive and Grand Avenue. It also will look at getting rid of potentially the one-way section there and making two-way traffic from Burlington Street to connect to Melrose. As part of the project, we're also looking at options for rehab or potential removal of the dam. And that study phase has kicked off, and so we are underway there. Been meeting with a lot of stakeholders here recently. We actually have our first public meeting on the 30th of January.
I think you've mentioned this before, and I just can't remember. The budget numbers that are up there, is that the project budget that would be partial, part of it would be DOT? Or is that just the city contribution to the project DOT will add to that?
Yeah, so that's sort of the city contribution. And latter phases, we'll also be looking for additional outside funding to help fund that project. We anticipate the university and DOT contributing as well. We haven't really gotten into any detailed discussions about that yet.
Thank you. So I think what I heard you say, a lot of good stuff, I'm excited about it. But is it possible that Grand becomes, the west of the river changes to a two-way street?
So essentially, Grand up to Byington, and then Byington to Melrose. So is, I guess the section of Melrose and Byington that's currently one-way would go to two-way traffic. So that way, you'd have a two-way connection from Burlington Street to Melrose. Hopefully be able to continue those bike lanes and make those connections, make it more, a smoother connection than it is today.
Yeah, I'm glad to hear that it's sort of expansive in the study, so.
Camp Cardinal Road, Kennedy Parkway pedestrian accommodations. So this would be looking at that intersection, getting rid of the right-turn lanes, and basically using that space to provide a pedestrian refuge island in the middle for crossing of Camp Cardinal. North Dodge Street and ACT Circle, this would be adding a new traffic signal at this location. Also would be anticipating a future fourth leg to the intersection for the ACT redevelopment. Iowa Avenue improvements, so this was one section that was included in the downtown streetscape master plan. This project would include more in the way of repairs, so pavement repairs, also curb ramp and sidewalk repairs and upgrades, as well as some utility improvements and repairs as well. Pedestrian Refuge Island project, so this is a project to look at installing pedestrian refuge islands at a number of locations. So this would be, be able to provide some protection for pedestrians as they're crossing streets. I think there's seven locations included in the project. Friendship Street, Evans Street, and Manitou Trail sidewalk infill. So we used to have a sort of a general sidewalk infill project that was, had annual money. We've kind of changed that, and now we are funding specific locations. So these are three locations where there are short stretches of sidewalk that are missing. So what we've been aiming to do is those areas where we can provide connections, make a continuous path in neighborhoods. So this is three locations where sidewalk is missing, and it'll be filling in those gaps. Benton Street trunk sewer improvements, so this is a section of sewer that is in need of repair. At the same time, we'll actually change the alignment. Right now, it, I believe, goes under a building and very. Right now, it, I believe goes under a building and very close to it, so this will be moving it a little bit to get it into more of an open area that's a little easier to maintain.
Confused by the image of the map and... Is that Benton Street?
That's Benton Street, yep. So it's just north of Benton Street, kind of there between Emerald and Westgate.
Oh, I know, I got it, I got it, sorry. Sorry, now I caught up with everybody else.
I was the creep there.
Next project is some improvements at the Napoleon Lift Station. So equipment there is getting to the end of its useful life, so looking at doing some renovation in that building. Aeration equipment improvements, also original equipment to the aeration train, so looking at updating that equipment, making it more energy efficient. The wastewater treatment facilities improvements, these, this project is already under construction. This is additional dollars to finish that project off. We also have HVAC updates that'll be done at the wastewater treatment plant. And then replacement of the rotating drum thickeners, which is a part of our sludge processing. The equalization basin is, is an HMA liner on it, needs to, there's getting some UV decay in that, and so we need to do some upgrade on that, basically overlay it potentially and helps keep the water in the equalization basin. For the, you know, we currently use the affluent water from the wastewater plant to irrigate the soccer park. And so this is addition of some pumps to help with that process. Digestor gas improvements, so this is the project we talked about earlier, so this is looking at the high-strength receiving station and getting that infrastructure in place. We have secondary clarifier repairs that need to be done down there also. So we have a, we have a plant that's, you know, long-term needed.
Moving over to the water side of things, the Bradford Drive Water Main replacement, so this will be replacing existing water main that's reached the end of its useful life there along Bradford Drive and some of the other side streets in that area near Southeast Junior High. High service pump VFD replacement, another project you saw last night that'll replace equipment up there at the water plant related to the VFDs. Collector Well Number One Reconstruction, so as it says there, that it'll be reconstruction of the collector well. This is one that has seen diminishing returns and now, I believe, is not producing. So this will install new laterals to allow for that well to start producing water once again and make some other improvements.
Jason, I'm sorry, I just want to get one point of clarification. The Bradford Street Water Main replacement, that's the project that's slated for this summer, correct?
Correct, yep.
Thank you.
Next is some roof replacements out at the water plant, similar to some of the other roofing projects you've seen. The treatment process update, so as the treatment methods have evolved at the water plant, this will look at installing some new improvements as well. Next one is installing or replacing existing water main along Melrose. This would be between Camp Cardinal and Highway 218. It's another location that has a history of water main breaks. The Powerhouse Dam Rehabilitation, so this is one that, a project that'll be replacing, or sorry, repairing the existing dam. This is one that's been in the works for a little while, so it'll be basically replacing those defects that have been observed during some dives.
This, this bridge is wholly owned by the city of Iowa City now, correctly?
Correct.
And it's needed for our water treatment? That's what, it's functional? It actually does something for us? It's not just a dam?
Yeah, it basically provides the water elevation for upstream, for water production. The next one is repairs at the city's GSR, so ground storage reservoir, so this is where we store water in various locations. So this would be upgrading the electrical and other components within those. Next project will be replacing some of the flow meters at the water plant. You can see here that these are some of the larger diameter pipes here with 12-inch through 36-inch meters replaced. The American Legion Road PRV integration and Peninsula Antenna, so the city's been working towards an east pressure zone within the water system. So this is another portion of that. So the PRV is the pressure, pressure-reducing valve, and so that is one that was installed as part of the American Legion Road project. We're also gonna be replace, or installing antenna on Peninsula, which will allow us to get rid of one of the existing antennas up at the North Street, North Dodge Street Bulk Water Station relocation, so this will be taking the existing water station from the transit and equipment location and moving it down to the new public works site. A water rate study, so with the pressure zone and some of the other improvements that are planned here in the coming years, this will be to kind of take a look at what our water rate should be and how we can accommodate those future improvements. The next project would be to install elevated storage for water out on the east side of town, again, getting, contributing to that east pressure zone.
So the city, long, long ago, I understood, moved to underground pressurized water as opposed to these elevated, is, will this be the first? It seems like a very different strategy, which is, I would love to learn why we're changing strategies.
And I'm not certain that we're completely changing strategies yet. So basically, this is a placeholder for GSR, so it could be still ground storage, or I guess it's water storage, whether it's elevated or ground storage, it is kind of yet to be determined. I think when you, when you looked at the time when we, when we replaced and went to the ground storage reservoirs, I think there was a lot of concern with terrorism at that time. And so that was the decision to go with the ground storage in the system. But as we look at the efficiencies that obviously are there by pumping up and having elevated storage and not having to pump that, you know, I think that's, that's what we're looking at now is from an energy efficiency standpoint.
Thanks. And then the final project here is out at the Rochester GSR and improvements associated with that. This would kind of partner with the previous project, being able to provide the location for filling that additional storage and making improvements to this location. With that, we will move on to transportation.
I'm gonna, and in regards to the, as we look at the topography on the east side of town and the elevation of it, elevated storage may be the only way that we'll be able to have higher pressures, especially in the Churchill Meadows, and as we continue to expand to the east on Herbert Hoover Highway.
Is the east side of town uphill or downhill from the water treatment?
It's uphill.
Okay.
No.
All right, Darian Nagel-Gam with transportation. We are on the home stretch here. Eight more items to go through, then we're gonna turn it back over to Jason to finish things up. Tower Place Drainage Modifications is the first project. This has been in the CIP for the last few years. This is a project to modify the stormwater handling with the Tower Place parking ramp. All the stormwater currently flows inward to the lower level, and there are times during extreme rainfall events where it exceeds the capacity of the pipes to actually discharge that stormwater. So we're looking at modifying the stormwater and creating an exterior supplemental stormwater structure to help support it. We do have a lower level that is occasionally flooded. We did have two extreme rain events earlier this year where we did have water in the lower level. It did not, we have blocked off the parking spaces that are most affected by it, so that's good news, but it is a consistent and persistent problem when we have those 15-minute extreme rainfall events. All right, second item is the Transit Maintenance Facility relocation. So this is a project to construct a new transit facility at the existing Public Works campus. The, our current facility is at the end of its useful life. It's over 40 years old, it's aging condition, and the conditions of the ground around it preclude us from expanding at that site. Additionally, we are out of space. We park, we park some of our buses in the bus wash at night because we simply don't have any other room for them. So it's both in terms of need, in terms of age and condition, and then also that capacity. So this is a project we are, have already kicked off. We're working through the design process and getting the federal clearance that we need at the Public Works site to relocate there. So we will be providing updates as this exciting project moves on. All right, the next project is to replace door and door closures in our parking facility. So this is pretty simple, just what it sounds like. We have some doors that are original to these facilities, and some of these facilities are over 40 years old, so that's, that's remarkable in one respect. You know, just on Monday, we had a situation where the doors during the extreme cold weather do not like to auto-close as well as they do during warmer times, so we had to, you know, send staff out to help address some issues at the Capitol Ramp. We're also doing some work currently at the, at the Tower Place ramp, so this is just an, this is a kind of an ongoing need to make sure that all of our doors and therefore the HVAC of the systems that they're attached to are functioning properly. All right, wayfinding sign refresh. We're, we're pretty excited about this one. So we have a variety of different wayfinding strategies in our ramps depending on when they were built. And I think our parking ramps, you could say that they are not always super intuitive in general, so having good wayfinding is really important. And some of our wayfindings, such as the sign here, is their, their age. We have some that are painted onto the facilities, we have some that are, that are manufactured and placed on the facility, and we would like to refresh them all, give them a new look, make them easier to comprehend, and make it consistent throughout all of our facilities to help with that legibility and understanding how to navigate the ramps. On-street parking meter replacement is the next project. We are a few years into our current meter replacement. The lifespan has been about eight to 10 years if we're very lucky, so this is planned for an out-year. But we are already at the point where we can see, you know, down the road, we're gonna need to do a refresh either of our smart meter equipment or evaluate a multi-space system, whatever that is at some point at the end of our CIP calendar around 29, we're gonna need to consider replacements for on-street parking.
Can you return to the signage, parking signage? I fully agree, our parking garage just can be very confusing, and they're all different, it seems like. Is this static signage, or you, or does this include the dynamic signage where like you get a pendant that says occupied space, unoccupied space? Is that, is that, is that, does this budget support any of that, or is that?
The budget may support looking into that. I'm not sure if it would support fully funding that. I think the intent was definitely with the static, but also look at what could we potentially do from an information standpoint? So there are a lot of parking ramps you'll see in other communities, bigger cities especially, might have an information board that tells you what the status is, parking availability for that facility, whether it's a red or a green dot, something that simple. And other nearby parking facilities, so you could see as you're leaving or see as you're entering, okay, this one may be full, but this ramp has got space and this ramp has, this other ramp has some space. So that's something that, that we'd like to start looking into.
Yeah. Real quick question on the, I just happened to notice, I parked at the city lot there between Bluebird and Lynn Street recently. You like 12-minute increment options, which was really nice? Has it always been like that?
So prior to the parking rate and citation fine changes this summer, yes, that was, that was part of our, that's part of our app setup. We have some flexibility with the app that we don't necessarily always have with the actual programming on the actual meters. So we, after, and then when we went through the parking rate change, we realized that those were not, those did not carry over, so we've recently re-updated those. So you should see a four-minute, four, you said a 12-minute?
I thought it was, I mean, I thought it was 12, it was a couple of days ago, so.
It should be, it should be 12. It's dependent on the rate that is charged at the actual, of the actual area or the lot, so it might vary slightly across the community. But we are trying to, to, at least in the app, allow parkers to park using the smallest increment that's divisible by the overall hourly charge.
Sure, sure. That's all the parking meters around town, or just in that?
Yes.
Yeah, thank you. Nice. I also saw the city note about using the kiosk at the, like, I'll call it the old mill, is it, are we gonna use a kiosk at the old mill site?
So there is not a kiosk at the old mill site. There is, however, a park, it's a park mobile parking lot, so we had, so we weren't entirely, when we did the last parking meter purchase of all the new parking meters, we were not sure that we'd be hanging on to that lot for very long, and we did not purchase replacements. They are on 3G technology, which really is what inspired all of the meters to be replaced. So the communications are, we basically left them in that lot as long as we could, and the communications were essentially going to get cut off. They're basically aging out. So we have transitioned that parking lot over to a park mobile-only lot, so you use the app to pay essentially when you come in. So there's signage across the parking lot, five, six, seven signs that we have that tells you how to pay in that, in that particular lot.
Got it.
I think I incorrectly used the kiosk term. It's literally just a sign with a QR code.
That says, use an app?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, Tower Place HVAC replacement. So this is another project where we have HVAC system at our Tower Place, not only the parking ramp, but the entire power, Tower Place structure. So there's, it's a multi-use structure, there, it's a condoed out structure. And so this would replace the, the heating and cooling equipment in the facility. The city, per the condo agreement, the city would be responsible for a little over 27% of that cost. So that's really a little over $250,000 ultimately. So this is a project that's been in the hopper for the last few years, and we've just gotten some discussions going with the, with the condo owner. So we're still working through exactly what the, what the project is going to look like, but this is our placeholder to get this moving. So Capitol Street ramp, North Stairwell lobby remodel. So this is the lobby that is adjacent to the Old Capitol Town Center and the various lobbies on each floor, so the lighting systems are not all functional all the time. And repainting, window trim, ceiling surfaces, they just need, they need a refresh. Transit automatic passenger counters. So this was really born from the Bloomberg Harvard data analytics training that we went through, and it really drove home how important it is to have, especially in transit, to have consistent and reliable data and understanding about where people are getting on and where people are getting off. And we just haven't had that. Technology in terms of automatic passenger counters have come a long way. They've been around for a bit, but they haven't really been as reliable as they are today. Campus has piloted on multiple buses, and they are expanding to their entire system today. We're looking to do so too, so that we can, we can do that really fine granual transit planning that we've really needed to for a long time to help us better understand how our users are using the system and better understand how we can create the system of tomorrow.
And that's it? All right, turn it over to Jason.
Great, thank you.
All right, so the final category are the on-the-radar projects. So as a reminder, these are the projects that don't have funding within the plan, but still projects that are important and want to keep in mind as we look forward. The first one is the Gateway Trail segment, so this is the, the trail segment there, north of Park Road, would tie into the university's pedestrian bridge there. The, when we did the Gateway project, there actually was a dead end for the trail, like I said, just north of Park Road, ready for that to extend. Sorry, south of Park Road, so, just had my picture flipped here. Across from Hancher. Next one is McCallister Boulevard Extension, so this would be the section just east of the one that we completed here a few years ago. So this would go from Sycamore Street over to Highway 6.
Next one is Eastside Sports Complex. We have the land on the east side of the city for this one. This has been on your on-the-radar, I think, for eight of my nine years here, so space for more athletic fields, possibly an indoor facility, but earmarked for athletics. The next one is the slide I tried to talk about an hour ago or so. This is the development of the Carson Lake Park. So we have a basic park master plan developed. It looks a lot like Terry Trueblood in that it's a lake with a nice path around it and some natural low-impact recreation areas around the park.
The Highway 6 Bridge, so again, this is a project we talked about a little bit ago. This is the DOT's project to replace the Highway 6 Bridge over the Iowa River. And then finally is Kitty Lee Road, so this is actually partially in the city, but mostly in the So this is actually partially in the city, but mostly in the county. So this is a road, we've done a functional design on this, there's no construction dollars, but we've just looked at what the reconstruction this might look like should it be needed as development occurs in this area. So we are currently finalizing that functional design, hope to have that done here in the next couple of months. But again, no construction dollars currently in the, in the program. That, that's what we have.
We haven't spent a lot of time talking about the Carson Lake project. It came up when we were doing our comprehensive planning in that area and developing the form-based code, but just to make sure the council understands that this, this is where we, we put the sewer underneath 218 a couple of years ago to prep for development. And the, the lake piece is really a regional stormwater strategy as opposed to building individual subdivisions, each with their own stormwater ponds. This is a, a one that'll serve a larger region, and we, we feel is, is going to best serve the community on this side. So then, then it's looking at how do we kind of turn that into an amenity? And Julie and team have done a nice job just with some conceptual plans here. But the, the CIP includes funds to purchase the property. We don't own this property, right? So as the owner decides to move forward with annexation, we'll have to negotiate that necessary property acquisition. And then the first priority, which was also a funded piece in the, in the CIP, is just building the stormwater piece. The, the park piece will come probably in phases as there's development in this area. But I expect that, you know, the, the council will probably start to see more of the Carson Lake concept in 2025 and into 2026 as, as property begins to, as we start to field more inquiries on annexation out here. So if you've got any questions, let us know. Otherwise, just know that this one's got a long ways to go, and we're still at that very initial land acquisition step.
All right, well, thank you all for the presentations. Any other questions by council or comments at this time related to the CIP?
I do, but it's a procedural question, and I think I know the answer. So if we have something in mind, or have heard from people who are interested in, in things that would qualify as CIP but are not included in any of this, does that become something where we go through the pending work topics process to get it on, to talk about it for council?
I think you can have that conversation now.
Okay.
And, and just understand, some projects we can be nimble on, and others may take years of planning or, or, or design, so, but let us know what you're thinking and-
Well, I would actually direct council to, Maurice Davis sent, essentially recommending a couple of pedestrian and road changes on Keokuk. So a mid-block pedestrian crossing with a refuge island near the Quick Star, a crosswalk at Keokuk and South Gate, and then an additional pedestrian crossing potentially with a refuge island on Broadway. Now, you know, whether that's like, that we do things hard and fast, you know, I just think it, it raises, he has some good suggestions, and it would be interesting to talk about them and to see, to get staff to weigh in on their thinking about this. I'm sure that some kind of a study would be necessary, et cetera, but these are new to me, and I think that especially, I'm on both of those streets all the time, every day, and there is definitely some merit in, in thinking about some pedestrian safety in those additional. So I just wondered-
The pedestrian refuse on Keokuk is actually identified.
It is, yeah.
It's, it's one of the areas that was identified in the seven, so, so that one will be under, that one will be under, yeah.
I was looking through, and I was like, why am I missing it? And he even noted, he was like, I see that this is there, and I, so my apologies on that.
So that one, that one could be included in the plan depending on how things are prioritized in, in that project.
Okay.
You know, the South Gate, Kirk, or Keokuk crosswalks, the challenge that's there at that location is there's two driveways on the east side of Keokuk where the, where the crosswalks would, I mean, they both, there's, there's, there's curb ramps there, but they both end in the driveways. So looking at that, we'd have, we would have to work with the property owners on the east side to relocate their driveways, to actually formalize a, a crossing there. The Broadway crosswalk, we'll have to figure, that, that's, that one was a new one to us, so we'll have to look at that and see how that could fit into that corridor.
Well, just to have the conversations, and I do apologize because he referenced that the, 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 the very first suggestion of the, the refuge on, on Keokuk was part of it, and I just, so, but yeah, I mean, as long as it's on your guys' radar and we can kind of talk about the possibilities, I think that they're decent suggestions to, to see what, what degree they make sense to, to implement.
Yep, and you received a couple other letters. I think one was from the Grantwood PTA about a similar project that's also in that same project line.
Okay.
Owned by Borlog too.
Yeah, the Borlog one, that's the Kennedy Crossing that Jason also covered. That's a shared project with Corleville.
Okay, yeah.
On that intersection. So several of those are already included, and we can look at the other South of Six requests. I know we have, we have had some conversations with the South of Six. If you recall, we gave them a quarter-million-dollar ARPA grant, and they're still working through their priorities for that grant, but I know the, the Keokuk-Broadway stretches have come up in those discussions, and, and clearly they could utilize those funds for some improvements there if our budget's trailing behind, trailing behind due to other priorities. But I think we'll at least be off to a good start with the initial one that's in the budget here.
Awesome. Well, thank you all for your patience in saying, yeah, that's already in there.
I have, I'll limit myself to three wishlist items. One, very much related to the South of Six, would be just pedestrian vehicular safety, and that would be the south of Burlington area, Riverfront Crossing has been wildly successful, but crossing Burlington from downtown is, is problematic. It's unsafe, and I think it warrants a study for how we can help people, especially a very large student population, traverse that. And I don't have anything in my head what that would be exactly, but I, I see all kinds of crazy people running across the street, and it just feels like there's an opportunity for improved design to help people cross. And I don't know whether it's bridges or islands or whatever, but the other thing that I, I took down on note is, is that we have, it looks like six or seven HVAC replacement projects, and I kind of mentioned this about how I would like us to prioritize electrifying when possible. And I fully understand that that adds initial costs in electrification for these systems when we can, and that might mean not being able to do as many as we want or allocating more money, but I, I would like that. And then the third thing would be Iowa River making this major investment in, in the Burlington Street Bridge, and I think it's going to be really improved vehicular, bicycle, and pedestrian safety, and hopefully maybe ties people to the river. But I think that there's a broader University of Iowa and Iowa City master plan that goes all the way from Highway 6 to the Arts Campus, and how that, how that, how we interact with the university and where we are trails and their trails connect. I see pieces of that, but as far as I'm aware, there's not a comprehensive master plan that involves both the university and, and the city. And I think there's opportunities to make that a really remarkable amenity for our city.
The Corleville, I mean, I'm thinking about the, the Pedal Paddle-
Yes.
-initiative, if there are pieces of that other than the, what we did with the pump track and the Terrill Mill Park aspects. Those are the ones that I'm just thinking of off the top of my head, but I think if there are any, like, bringing us back to that comprehensive vision, just to know what folks are talking about, or I think if, if staff needs more intergovernmental conversations that we can help with, that's something maybe just to bring to us.
Yeah, the university is, is currently doing some internal planning along the river. They've shared with us a little bit of insight into some of what they're, what they're thinking along their campus area. Other than the Pedal Paddle grant application, which wasn't successful, we don't have any formal master plans. There's probably bits and pieces in the Riverfront Crossings Plan or the City Park Master Plan, but nothing cohesive, and then there's no identified funding source or funding priorities for, for those projects, so.
We just passed a conservation bond that Iowa City voters strongly supported.
Good alignment there, absolutely.
It is a strategic plan item, if I remember correctly, to study that?
Correct, yes.
Would we expect to see that study as a CIP expenditure or a general fund expenditure?
I don't know what that scope would be. My, my guess, it would be a general fund operating expense. I don't have the strat plan up in front of me, but I think that was a 27, 28 type of year.
Sooner the better.
Well, that's, I mean, you all can reprioritize that if you, on any of these items, you know, sort of, if you'd like to see us introduce these things sooner, we can do that. There's, there's capacity issues, which I know you all understand. There's, of course, financial capacity to do more. There's also staff capacity to, to do more, so you, you park something else and you push this up, but any one of those things could be prioritized. The Burlington project is probably the most complicated of all those. It is a state highway and would require considerable study before a solution's identified.
A little off-topic, but who is managing the conservation bond funds? Like, how would we collaborate if we wanted to, like, and how do we identify projects in Iowa City?
So that would be the, the county is managing those, and we would meet with the county, and we have a meeting with the county scheduled, I think, next week, or this, this week, this Friday, we're meeting to talk about potential projects in, in Iowa City. I'll note the river interest there.
Is that one of the projects, like, potential cooperation for affordable housing?
For, I'm sorry, for what?
For, like, affordable housing.
Probably not the conservation bond. That was really mostly designed for environmental protections of property, and anything along the river is probably not going to be suitable for, for the housing projects.
Like, for the potential meeting with them, is this only for that?
It's only for the conservation bond planning, yes.
All right, any other comments about the CIP? All right, we'll go on to just any other budget discussion at this time. Again, we'll have opportunities to continue our budget discussions on all of our work sessions through March.
Mayor, can I, can I ask one? I'm going to put Jaclyn on the spot and just ask her to repeat herself, which was part of the introductory remarks, because I think this is really important for capital planning going forward, and that's, Jaclyn, if you could just walk us through where we are from the, the debt service levy standpoint, so kind of where the debt service levy is now. We have to make some assumptions on growth. This is how much we can bond each year. And one of my big messages to you during the, during the budget proposals, we have to keep expanding that capacity because we are losing purchasing power. So could you run through those numbers for us again, Jaclyn?
So what we're planning to bond for this year, to start off, is $14.29 million. The current CIP plan, as it stands for the five years, the average issuance would be a total of $15.25 million. And then if you go into our current debt levy and assumptions baked in there, we could-
Can you speak to the mic because we can't hear you?
Sorry, I'm quiet. Can you hear me now?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Do we just start at the beginning, or, okay. So starting back at the beginning, the, the F525 bond issue is $14,290, $290,000. The current CIP plan as it stands right now would account for an average issuance of $15.25 million. With our current debt levy baking in a few different assumptions, we could support up to $14.6 million, so there's a gap there of, you know, $650,000. And that assumption of getting it to that $14.6 million would be with increasing the levy by 21.7 cents more. Other assumptions baked into that would be assuming that we have a taxable growth of 2% over the next two years, and then after that, 3% growth every year. The last four years have averaged 1.66% growth, but then before that has been, I guess, over the last four, it's been 1.66, but over the last two years, it's been 2% average growth. And then also with our debt levy and debt issuance, we have to factor in interest rate, obviously, so we're assuming a 5% interest rate, and that could go up or down, right, based on market. So then with that current gap, if we, if we don't meet or exceed our assumptions to make up that gap, we would need to either raise the debt levy beyond the 21.7 cents, scale back the scope of projects, or delay projects.
What's the total capacity available in the debt service levy?
So we can, we can levy as much as we have available. There's not a limit.
I think we're about 15% of the state limit is where we're at, if I'm remembering from the budget correctly.
We have a pretty big-
We could increase it by dollars if you're saying, okay, all right. Got it. And I understand that, that impacts our, our rating and all of that, okay.
So I guess the, the big takeaway is this budget anticipates that we're going to increase our debt levy 21 cents. We also know we have to decrease our general fund levy as well. So we see these kind of working in concert to try to keep us a stable rate, and obviously you guys can direct it differently. But even going up 21 cents, if our assumptions don't, even if our assumptions hit, we're still a little short, but if our assumptions fall short, we could be having to raise that even more. So just want to give you that picture in terms of how much we have into this plan. It, it doesn't, from staff's perspective, it's, it's pretty status quo in terms of the volume and the expense of projects, but it's getting harder to continue to, to do the same number of projects when their cost keeps increasing quite a bit, and we're only getting that 1.66% growth. So I think the debt service levy is something we're, we're definitely going to be talking about with you over the next four or five years. And hopefully, between good growth and the 21 cents that we know we have to add, we'll, we'll be okay, but there's a chance that we could need more than the 21 cents.
Really obvious question. The 21-cent increase takes into account the fact that we're no longer saving into or having surpluses that are in the facility replacement fund?
Correct, yes. We're not-
We're having to borrow more because we don't, we have less cash in the bank that we're accumulating.
We have less cash, and if you look at the trend of general fund transfers into the CIP, so that, the funding source there, you see the general fund is on the bottom right-hand side, that, that 3.7 million. Prior to the last round of property tax reform, we were, we were transferring about $1 million per year was our goal into the, into the capital program, and by the end of the five years here, we're down at the $630,000 transfer, so we're starting to scale from transferring a million of general fund in to transferring at the end again $630,000, so about a 40% reduction in what we're transferring, and that's just probably going to continue to have to go down, maybe even at a quicker rate than we've projected. That puts more pressure on borrowing, to your exact point. Thank you, I just wanted to recap that, I think that's important.
All right, any other comments by council? Hearing none, we are going to be adjourned. Enjoy the rest of the afternoon, and thanks, staff, for being here.